So, thank you and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Do I have any apologies for absence?
We have apologies from councillor Alban, a family commitment, no apologies from councillor Moore.
Any declarations of interest? No, and so straight into item three, High Street Heritage Action Zone Decorative Lighting Project. To consider the HS has decorative lighting project proposal and whether or not the 2024-25 decorative lighting budget should be used for this project. Over to you.
You, Chair.
May I give a board introduction?
Thank you.
So, at the moment, our decorative lighting for the last 10 years has been supplied by a contractor. And that was the provision of Christmas lighting that came in November and was returned in January. And that was a large centrepiece and then pieces that went across certain roads. And this is supplemented by all year round, there's festoon lighting around the pedestrian area in the town centre. And that festoon lighting is attached to a wire. It's not held up on, the lighting itself isn't on brackets, there's brackets and wires holding it up. This has had, this has required no updating and maintenance, or hasn't had any for the last 10 years. And when it came to putting the lights up last year, it became apparent that there was, there was work to be done upgrading and repairing the existing infrastructure. So the lights were able to go on this past Christmas, but before, but they need significant investment. So whereas this year we're now out of contract with Lumelight, there's £20,000 in the New Year's budget for decorative lighting. But my colleagues have been, already been doing quite a lot of legwork around this. And it's become apparent that before we even get to the point of looking at anything decorative and interesting, there is more than £20,000 actually just for repairing the infrastructure of the current festoon lighting. The project before you does not include the festoon lighting that is on the highway. What am I thinking of?
Just the town centre, just the pedestrian.
So where else is there lighting up where the road isn't pedestrianised?
So we have a little bit in King, Queen and York, but we didn't put that on here the last Christmas.
That is, that is outside of this project. One thing that has become apparent is it's not appropriate for the technicians to be repairing the infrastructure of the Christmas lights. There is money to be saved by providing staffing assistance and the nifty lift. But actually, the, where we've got things attached to a variety of private properties and cables and things going over highways, we need someone, we need professionals to be managing this who can, who can do stress testing, who can confirm what weights can be attached to these wires. This is not something that we should be doing in-house. And there is a local electrician that does exactly this with Fannet District Council and who we've been working with. And so this is why the quote in there is from them for the infrastructure work. But where possible, using our own staff to support their works. Is that it? I think so, Chair.
Okay, so probably best if I now hand over to Rebecca to go through the rest of it?
Yes, so just briefly, Historic England were given, given a number of suggestions. I could meet with Blasheir earlier on in the year. Blasheir are an internationally leading public light decorative lighting company with an excellent reputation. They came down and did a site visit on our space, specifically pedestrianised area. So we, we had some ideas of what we wanted to do and we are restricted. But then this potential spend came along and this is due to an underspend in the town centre. Through their very last project, they realised it's actually coming well under what they expected. So, so that we don't lose that funding, they've given us the opportunity to purchase with some matched funding and obviously some revenue work that needs to be done. These particular bulbs which we've, we have, they arrived yesterday, they are ex hire system, but we did get them up and running yesterday. So we can show you then. The plan is that they, in order for it to look effective, we would order 112 sets. And that's, so that'd be 448 of these giant bulbs. They are 50cm in height and about a ruler 28cm in width.
Would you like me to just go in?
Do you want me to?
Thank you. I could have.
You could be the model.
I'll have to post these work.
If you like, we can turn the lights up and plug them in just to show you.
I'll show those down.
I think that's probably the best way because they look a little bit like a giant light bulb at the moment.
That's much prettier in real life than it is in the picture.
The canvas that these lights would be on all year round. And this is basically to create a nice ambient light that hopefully makes people feel a little bit more welcome and safer in the town centre throughout the year. And our Christmas lights are only on six weeks and of course it's dark from about four o'clock from November to the end of February. So what we propose to do with these is have four on the end of each wire, a cuttinary wire, of which we have 56 wires going across the highway in the pedestrianised area.
Shall we, shall we put the lights back on? Thank you, Roshan. Do you want to ask a question?
I do. I want the lights stepped away and I'll just hang them up. However, I'm worried about those particular lights. I'm worried the points, the issues and everything. They'd take one of them back and that would be it, they'd be throwing things out and letting them down. They're quite, you know, they're quite a target, I'll be honest with you. And they look quite easily breakable and I have to ask too, given a set and, you know, if one goes out, can that be replaced easily? I just think of all the lights, you know, if we have something slightly small, you know the lights outside Horsby at Christmas? Do you know what I mean? Best lights in Fannet, quite frankly. What's outside Horsby? Quite, they're like large lights sometimes do, they're smaller, but they're still quite significant. I would have suggested maybe something that was less of a target.
If I, if I can just come in here and Rebecca can correct me, it's these or nothing?
That's what I was wondering.
I think, I think that was the impression I got from Rebecca before, but I'd like Rebecca to carry on and confirm that if that's still the case.
I think the problem is with Historic England is they are quite rigid about when we spend. And they, you know, it's tenuous about whether we will even get these in Rams, in England, let alone the country, let alone Ramsgate. Because they're being ordered in from France, they are made from PVC, they're a bit polycarbonate. And they are IP66, but they are, you are right, they could become a rite of passage for teenagers. There's always that risk.
And I don't want to say no to them.
No, I'm sorry for interrupting.
I mean, if it's, if it's case of that or nothing, yeah, we have that, we have to try it out.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I look at that and I'm just instantly worried.
I think we had them up yesterday and I can show you a video and it was a similar height, slightly lower. We hung them in a bar in the fire station. And yes, they are quite big, but they're going to be up, they'll be five and a half metres up. So for sort of to the ceiling, you'd be, but still, yes.
Yeah, I've just, just come to my place of work.
Yeah. To answer your other question, the, the only way we could have a, some replaceable ones is, and we've kind of thought about this in the actual 112. Because in fact, I think it's less than 56 cuttinary wires because we're going to put a few down the alley from between Harborough and Crusties, leading to whole horse and groom. But we'll keep a spare set of four, but that is only four. You can, you can only buy them in a set of four, but then they could be replaced if they do get broken.
And in that case, just to add a question to that, let's say some do get broken. Would we be able to shrink the extent? So, you know, bring some in from like that end of King Street and then that end of Queen Street, get rid of those and bring them in. So, and it might be a diminishing project if you like, but, you know, I think part of me, I do completely understand where you're coming from. But it's also, if we don't try, are we, are we going to let the fear of vandalism stop us from doing it? And I think that's.
You spoke to me because I thought it was not the fear of vandalism stopping us from doing that, it seemed if there was anything that was more appropriate.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Because it's a waste of money. It's not a fear of vandalism.
Sorry.
Like they're going to go really quickly. Could we have something that would be slightly, have better longevity? But if we can't, we can't.
No.
We are restricted about the height as well. In fact, I'm still waiting for clarification from Kent County Council. I believe if we can fix them the way we discussed yesterday with Saunders, who came and assessed them for us as well. We will pass the height restrictions that we have. So our attempt is at six metres. These will be about 55 with the carabiner that's on top and the connector. It should be enough clearance, but it does, it is slightly different per county and each county. I believe it's between 5.2 and 5.4 metres for the power line lorry, for example.
If I can just bring the town clerk in. Thank you, Chair. Just very briefly, it has been presented to us as this is what you will have.
Yeah, fair enough. In which case, you know, when it comes to the vote, I say yes.
My colleagues have tried finding alternative solutions, things that would be acceptable to Historic England. And no, this is, this is the offer on the table.
I think my inclination at this stage, has anyone firstly, because I'm conscious I've not really looked over this side of the room. I've been looking over here. Has anyone over here got any other questions or anything else to add about these lights?
No, I think, I think it would, it would look really nice, but then again, you know, what Amory said.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
But if we can't do anything else, I am happy to have them.
Yeah, it's the one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Insurance, presumably we'll have insurance if they are broken.
Yes, there is something somewhere in one of these documents that refers to insurance as well.
It's a one, it should work.
But, right, so.
Sorry, a question again, this is the town clerk, if I may. So, so we are basically being offered this money to use up with these lights. And that's actually fine, I'm with that. Costs extra to us?
So the part of our contribution is staffing hours. But we should consider that this project is going to absorb all of the £20,000 that we've got put aside for decorative lighting in the next year. And there are certain things, for example, at the moment, our festoons are multi-coloured. Actually, the, the multi-coloured lighting, sitting with this, it could well be that's desirable to change our festoons over to a warm colour. Also, if these are going to be up all year round, there isn't going to be, what are we, what's going to be the big turn on at Christmas? It could well be that in the course of the next year, the, the committee requests, you know, there's maybe some more, some other money somewhere else in the budget that's moved over for decorative lighting within the town promotion budgets or elsewhere in the council budget. But there's no, it can't be confirmed whether the council would permit that to happen.
So I'm glad you mentioned that because that was in my next question to Rebecca. I know you said to me about these are warm lights and some of our other lights are not warm lights. And so there, there could be a sense of a, a bit of a disconnect in it. What's the likelihood that we're going to have to replace our existing lights anyway? What's the likelihood that we will replace, need to replace our existing lights so that they fit in with these? And what's the likely cost of that going to be? I realise that I sprung that on you and you probably haven't got answers, but.
I did speak to Lumelight, who are the company we've worked with for the last 10 years, yesterday. And also they replied in an email today. To replace the warm white bulbs, I mean, we'd need around a thousand, 800 to 1,000. There, it comes in around £3,700.
That's not the wire, that's actually just bulbs.
I have, remember our, our.
Would our wire take those bulbs then?
The heart being the great promise wood, because it's replacing with a company that supplied it. So, but we have got a quote from Blasheir for a slightly different festoon. It may be, maybe on a par with Hornby in that there's five bulbs per metre. At the moment, we have one bulb per metre. So they have given us a quote for that. And this is something that, just if it's okay to mention this, Historic England would consider this or that. But at the moment, they have indicated that they wouldn't consider both. But I guess in a way that largely depends on how much matched we are doing and compared to the amount that they've suggested they will fund up to. And the quote from Blasheir, and this would be for the five warm lights for every metre, comes in at, I don't need glasses. 13, 13, 326 or 13, 126.
And that's with the wire, because it obviously would be.
With everything, yes. So we would need to get the wires as well. So obviously that's a lot more than just replacing the bulbs. But we wouldn't get a better product in terms of how much it would be worth.
But we could replace the bulbs within 4K, 37 you said, I always round things up.
And can I ask, what would we do with the, if we're doing the warm white, what would we do really?
I have asked if they would, because we have got a lot of spares as well, 700.
Yeah.
I asked the company today if we could perhaps do a part exchange and she came back and said no. But I have said perhaps I could have a conversation with the manager and we've been a long-standing customer of that. So I'm waiting to hear back.
But if we had to, we have, we could use those in Radford House and other places for missing, couldn't we? So we'd have them there as part of our.
I, I think when Rebecca and I spoke about this originally, that was one of the, the things that we talked about was. So like, just throw them away, obviously. And I'm not, you won't see, you won't begin to suggest that, I realise, but we could use it for them. So either way, you know, if we can, if we can get any of these funds, great. But if we can't, then we'll use them somewhere else. Sorry.
So it says applications for Harbour Street, High Street, King Street, Queen Street.
No, it's the pedestrian, so where the pedestrianisation ends, the lights will end. So that it is purely pedestrian, because we had that conversation earlier. And that, when I say about if there are breakages and even with age, if, you know, if there are sort of, you know, things happen or whatever. So over time, then we could shrink in, like we could take out Queen Street, King Street. So it just went straight down. So, you know, they would, to, to give greater longevity to the, to the lights as they are, if we wanted to.
And the lights that are large.
Good question.
They're, they're guaranteed for two seasons. And there is a slight issue in that as well, because Historic England like things to be guaranteed for three years.
I was going to say two seasons, it's not all year, it's only two seasons effectively, isn't a year in reality, is it?
And we are currently having them on all year. I mean, in terms of lighting.
Exactly.
Significant.
Well, that is initially, if they want to, it's going to cost us money to replace them when they don't work anymore.
Chair. Yes.
So when you talked about the warm whites from this company, you said it's an alternative that Historic England would be looking into, you know. Do you mean? So we do have a choice, it's these or these?
There is technically, yes, they would, but consider.
Funding and everything, is it, is it better for us if we have those? Get my head around the maths.
Yes, because it is all related to that capital spend. Yes, yes. So in, in terms of the festoons to replace all of our festoons. And just to also say, it is, you can just back me up here. In terms of the amount of staff and expertise we'd need, it would be sensible if we were, for example, to say we do both.
Yes.
To do them at the same time, otherwise we're going to have double the, the staffing costs in terms of external contractors.
So which goes to my question previously as to, and what's the cost to us? So really, truthfully, forget the staffing hours, because I think that that just comes as part of the course of what we do as a council, do you know what I mean? So let's not think that is extra. But in terms of purchasing, so we've got the 20 grand that we've set aside, well, fair enough, that's got to do with the infrastructure. This is sort of like the freebie, as it were, but then we've got to find, in effect, 13 grand.
Or three and a half to just replace the bulbs.
Right.
And, and also what about the cost of the, the professional electricians?
Yes, apologies, that's what I meant when I, I meant the external contractors, the cost that we have in, from the town clerk has set out.
And what is that cost?
Would be on a par to just go back up and replace the festoons.
And what is that? And, sorry. She says I could.
Maybe.
How lazy am I? Sorry.
Right, so.
Sorry, mate?
Yes.
50 grand?
So at the moment, it's a net cost of 32,882. What's that for? So this.
The electrical enabling works in.
All right, sorry, I'm not on the right page yet. Yeah, we believe this quote is high. It's, it's a quote to basically replace all of the existing infrastructure. And it may well be that once they're up on a nifty lift and looking things, it could be less. It, may I ask a colleague something?
Thanks, dear.
The, the quote for £3,000 plus to go around replacing individual bulbs, what would the, what would mechanics of doing that look like to actually replace how many bulbs?
We think it's around 800.
800 bulbs above the highway, one at a time, unscrewing them, screwing them back in.
So if we changed the bulbs, it would be in conjunction with.
What's your name?
Jones Times Company.
It's Saunders.
Saunders, taking down the festoons while they're replacing the cuttinery. We'd replace the bulbs and then they'd install the new big lights and the festoon would back up again.
So again, another question, just so I'm, I'm being thick here.
No, you're not, it's complicated.
So this gross cost of, you know, the total, is that all the money that we'd be getting? It's not just the lights, we're not getting, we're not having to find that as well, the installation costs. So effectively, this project is, is, that's the money that we'd be getting in on it. And then we're finding the 20 grand, obviously, and three and a half if we were to replace the bulbs. So we're not finding the installation costs. Thanks, Miss.
So we need to contribute £21,428, of which is £5,500 our staffing time. So we deduct, deduct that from the 21 auto weight. So there's about £16,000 to actually leave our bank account.
Yes.
That theoretically leaves £4,000 to pay for the, those lots of bulbs. What I, so we could do it that way or I think possibly if we think that the electrical enabling works could come in less, if it comes in 10,000 less.
Doesn't get these babies.
The, the lights, the, the new festoons plus those.
So I propose.
Well, it does, I'm just, let me before, let me just read this out. A proportionate reduction will be made in the grant if the actual cost of the works is less than the estimated cost on which the grant calculation was based. So would trying to do that kick in that sentence?
If TDC and Historic England accepted that we were going to make up the cost by purchasing the, the additional festoon lights. If the electrical enabling works come down, there is a possibility that the High Street Has grant is also going to come down. But our contribution will also come down. But I think we do have, whatever happens, still 4,000 left in our budget to.
The bulbs.
To do replacement bulbs.
I'm going to make a proposal, Grace, is that okay? So I propose that we accept the kind of offer that we've been given and work with it as best we can to get the best value for money. How do you want to phrase that? So we say yes to this, if we have to use the, you know, four grand bulbs, we do that. If we can make it better, then we'll do that. Town clerk, so I'm going to read that out in a beautifully articulate sentence for me.
I think it hasn't been made. Sorry, yes, councillor. Okay.
So to accept the High Street Has grant at the section 57, 79 and 80 of the planning act. And additionally, use Ramsgate Town Council's budget to purchase up to £4,000 of warm lighting to be replaced in the existing wiring. Or if acceptable to TDC and Historic England, if, if, if the budget allows. Could we replace the festoon lighting with new?
Could I suggest rather than putting that level of detail into the motion, it's actually, we accept the £49,999 on the basis that we will fund the rest of the costs in the most economical way to get the most out of it that we can. How does that? And then, and then we, we give Rebecca by that a certain amount of leeway to, to get the best out of it, rather than tying us into we've got to do X, Y and Z. So, I don't know, again, I'm not sure of how you want to, to word that, but I think, I mean, the principle is we're still. So, um, I don't know, again, I'm not sure how you want to, to word that, but I think, I mean, the principle is, we're still, what Amory has just said. Um, but it's just getting the wording to give Rebecca the most flexibility in.
Delegating the power to.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, delegate. That's wonderful. I like that. Thank you. Delegating the power to Rebecca. Don't you feel empowered?
Um, if that, if it's okay to just mention, we did manage to negotiate on big bulbs, as we'll call them, uh, a three and a half thousand pound discount. So there's possibly a little bit of leeway on the festoon as well. So we'd always ask if we buy the two, whether they'll give us a discount.
Because I think, I'm sorry, Town, I think we're conscious that from Christmas, we're going to need some other lights or something.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah.
I think it also should be noted that the Ramsgate Town Council's, uh, team contribution, it could well go up if there's, um, if, if there, if there's more happening. Actually, our own contribution, the staffing hours could well go up.
Yes, I agree.
And, um, before we, we come back to this hard cash, um, now the amount of hard cash that we are putting into this as the town council, um, and compared to the amount of hard cash that we allocated in the town promotion budget this year, um, how does that compare? Uh, I mean, because some of that, uh, staff money is coming out of our town promotion budget, if I'm reading this right. No, you, no, you won't.
The, the RTC staffing budgets are not, are not split into so much on planning, so much on.
So how much of our lighting budget are we actually spending or overspent by?
Um, so at the moment, it will be, uh, up, up to twenty, we're just shy of twenty.
Just shy of twenty, so.
All the questions that I asked previously was that.
Yeah, I, but I just wanted, I just wanted it in a nutshell there. So, um, at the end of it, the, uh, the, the town promotion budget will have zero balance in effect. Yeah, I just wanted that right. Yeah, we, we've kind of done all of that, but I just wanted it in, in, yeah, repeated in a nutshell, yeah.
Um, I would suggest that at the next town promotion committee meeting in April, that's not far off. It is possibly worthwhile then considering, um, the fact that wha, what is going to be switched on at, at Christmas.
Yes, exactly.
And if, if, if there's something else to be found in the year or.
Bear in mind you robbed me of thirty-eight thousand pound last year.
Nice tree.
Doing, yes, that is something, uh, you know, because I'm, I'm conscious that we, we are left without any funds and I just wanted that to be a hundred percent clear, that we are actually left without any funds for Christmas lighting by doing this. Um, and we will have to, uh, look at how we manage to find some money from somewhere.
Let's do that another time.
But absolutely, we're not going to do that tonight because I think, um, I will ask Rebecca and Dean to, or Dean, to, um, have a look at the budgets for me before the next town promotion committee meeting. So do you need?
Timescales, can you do it in a year? Because it says here we have to spend money in a year or a letter.
Actually got to spend it by the thirty-first of March this year.
Which is my, we'll leave the works by.
No. I think that's.
Six months this election. Commence within six months.
Or by the. Um, or by the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-four. And it's, it's, that's the goal we are.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we have a meeting to us.
This is, yeah, it's a good meeting.
Why though? Why would you box this?
Because it's the, because the HS has, anything that's not spent by the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-four is, um, lost and goes back to the government.
This says. Now, it's, well, the grant must be settled in one month, the date of the letter which is supposed to mark. Works must commence in six months, the day you write this otherwise written, works are excluded and copies are final received at the council, written, paid, received. Received in one year, the date of this letter, or by the thirty-first of March.
Whichever date is the earliest.
Yeah.
And the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-four is the earliest. This, I think, I think what this is, is, is a standard letter that has been being used for three years of, of the, of the project, of the, the. Yes, it's, I, I, I think it's, it's a standard letter that they've been using since the beginning of the house something. And so therefore, um, we're coming in right at the end. Yeah, I know, it's, it does, it does.
Well, that's not clear, is it? It could be next year. That's what it says. Well, it's a legal document.
But whichever is the earliest, it has to be the thirty-first of March this year. And that's why we, we're here tonight for extraordinary meetings. So, um, yeah.
Am I right in thinking that it's acknowledged that we're not going to have these up by the thirty-first of March? But we do need to have the lights in our hands by the thirty-first of March.
Works must comment within six months, the date of the letter says, is that's okay?
Yes.
And this will change that bit as well.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a legal document, Helen. You know, that's inaccurate in that case. Sorry, it is. It's inaccurate.
Want to take it up?
I don't know, Lucia shouldn't be sending out letters.
I, I think it's just a standard letter they've been using for three years and, um, I, I did, yeah, yeah.
Just to, just to say, it has been an incredibly quick process and, 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 um, yeah, this had to be drawn up super fast.
So I assume it has to be under fifty grand, so that's why.
If it's, if it hits fifty grand, then it has to go through another layer of process. So that's why it's, I was talking to Lucia earlier as well, so it's forty-nine, nine, nine, nine for that reason.
Do you want to spend more something else? It has to be on the lights.
I think Rebecca and I already had that conversation. It is pretty much this or chuck it.
Is this where you'll pay me?
I think it, it could have been, other things could have been considered if there was more time available. Whereas TDC were aware of the fact that lighting is something that we were looking to address and had some budget. And it had been something that, yes, would, say for streets had already been discussed. So I think it was felt that this was at very short notice, could be pulled together quickly in, in the remaining few weeks of the, the year.
Twas ever thus, indeed, spend the money by the end of the year.
Well, as soon as possible. We want the lights up soon. Do, do we need to just check the wording of the motion now we've played around with it? And then, um, we can, so I, I mean, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we go with this project.
Um, uh, so to, uh, accept the High Street Has Decorative Lighting Project proposal and to delegate to, uh, Town Centre and Tourism Manager Authority to, uh, proceed in the most economical way with the project.
Are you happy with that?
Tell me what you mean by one second, I'll go away. I don't want to find that.
Okay, we'll, we'll take, we'll take a pause for, for thinking time.
I think, I think it needs to be, I don't want it to come back on Rebecca. Do you know what I mean? And I don't want us to even decide that because that's not Rebecca's fault. Do you know what I mean? So you should only go a couple of ways together. And I think it needs to be us. So I think if we, instead of the town manager saying that.
Town Promotion Committee.
Exactly. You know, or, or something for Town Promotion Committee, not just Rebecca. I don't think that's right.
Yeah.
If the committee's going to have, um, further authority in the matter, it then requires us to have committee meetings.
Right.
And so I think with the, the timescales that are available, there, there isn't time to be bringing, to be calling more extraordinary meetings in the, in the coming.
And I appreciate that, so let's not do that. I'm just, I didn't want it falling on Rebecca's shoulders effectively, do you know what I mean? For one reason or another. If it's the only way we can do it, then fine.
I was going to say, in a sense, Rebecca is supervised by the Town Clark, so anything Rebecca does is, has to be signed off by the Town Clark.
It's quite often the, the case that it'll be an officer in conjunction with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Could be, yeah.
Exactly. That's, that.
Okay, yeah, that'll be fine. That'll be fine. That, that puts me and, and Corinna in it. If that's, yeah, okay. Nice, nice big grin there from Rebecca as well. So, yeah, no, I, I mean, my, my concern is that the timescales are not there to keep holding committee meetings.
No, no, I agree, I agree. I just didn't want it to be something saying why. Something everyone's got the wrong answer for. You know, either way, you know.
I agree. I mean, at the end of the day, if, if she doesn't do it right, we delegated it and it comes back to us for being wrong to delegate it. I'm sure that won't happen. So, um, yeah, they, yeah, you are sat there. Right. Done? Talking bud, yeah. All right, I think we're all agreed. Very much. In that case.
Say for everything but not for anything.
Is there anything else that we need before we go? The, I mean, we know that the date and time of the next, um, town promotion committee meeting is the tenth of April at seven. Um, that's not changed, so, uh, that's it. Okay, it's over. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Much appreciated.